Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Village of the Wilmete Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Colling.
Here.
Ms. Norick.
Here.
Mr. Pelletan.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Ms. Choka Urban.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here.
For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from the zoning, from our zoning ordinance on applications for special use. Based on the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in section 5.4.1F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based on whether the standards of review set forth in section 5.3.1E of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we are making this evening at the next regularly scheduled meeting on February 11th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its recommendation as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a super majority of five board members, five of seven, must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present at a given meeting, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, the application must receive four affirmative votes. Tonight, we have six members present, so a vote of three to three, for example, would obviously not, not be an affirmative vote. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. So I think in recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all the members of the board present on a given evening, we give applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is February 5, 5th of February. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening on which your case, to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-pretended agenda located on the table near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium and state your name and address and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from the village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it's not necessarily that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are planning to testify tonight, I would ask you to raise your right hand this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say "I do." Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case?
Our first case is 2019 Z-44, 735 Leamington Avenue. This is a request to table to February 5th. They are still working on refining their plans.
So moved?
Yeah, move to continue this matter until February 5th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This case will be moved to February 5th. Next case?
Our next case is 200, I'm sorry, 2019 Z-27, 206 Gerard. The applicants are requesting that the case be tabled to April 15th while they continue to work on their request.
Move to continue this matter until April 15th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's been approved. To defer it to April 15th. Next case, please.
Our next case is 2019 Z-42, 1124 Elmwood Avenue. This is a request for a 2.1-foot combined side yard setback variation to permit the construction of a one-story addition.
Good evening. I'm Healy Rice. I'm the architect for the project, and I'm here with Bob and Pam Pankouskas, who are the homeowners. We're seeking permission to build a one-story addition on the east side of the property in order to add a new staircase to the basement and a small back door slash mudroom that is going to be kind of reconfigured under the existing front stairs. We are seeking permission to encroach into that permitted side yard, combined side yard, by two feet. The house currently is a little over 11 feet from the property line and, I'm sorry, the combined side yard is required to be 13 feet. We're currently at 11, and the existing west side yard is the one that impinges on that overall square foot or linear footage, so we need to borrow two feet out of the west side in order to accommodate this staircase. The hardship here is that the front stairs that are in the home, original to the home, are a beautiful curved staircase that goes from the first to the second floor. It's a very tight radius, and the stairs underneath that go to the basement are extremely limited, steep, and very difficult to get anything up and down, couches, furniture, or anything large or cumbersome. So we're hoping to be able to move the stairs from underneath the existing front stair into this small addition, which will only be one story, in order to create that access that's much more safe and gives functional space. The, since the house is currently two stories, this one-story addition really will not impede on the next-door neighbors at all, block their later air. We're more than 15 feet away from them, so the intent of the ordinance is still in place. We still meet the minimum side yard with our addition that would be required as the lot's 53 feet wide. Those are really the highlights of the case. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Have you talked with the neighbor?
Yes.
Yes, I've talked with the neighbor and explained.
Yes, I've talked with the neighbor.
Give your name and address, please.
Sorry. Robert Pankouskas, 1124 Elmwood, and I've talked to my next-door neighbor that is closest to the addition and shared a set of the plans with their, with them, and they had no objections at that time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions for the applicant, any comments or questions?
I think it's, I mean, it's a request to just utilize the property a little better and to bring it to more of a standard with having at least a wall to hang coats or something in the mudroom compared to others.
If there are no other questions for the applicant, I will...
Well, I do have one question.
Oh, you do? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I noticed, I think you'll need, unless I'm wrong, another variance because of the air conditioning condensers that are there. Don't they have to move?
They are farther back than the addition will be.
Okay, but it does, you won't need to move those?
No, no.
Okay. It looked like it was fairly close when you put the porch on. Is there further back?
No, they're fine, yeah.
Okay. Now, the addition, that whole, that whole space is existing where it says eating area? I didn't get around.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, all of that, the main house is sort of that L shape, correct. It's existing, yes. Yeah, we're doing a bunch of work inside, but this was the last piece that sort of helped make the whole thing come together.
Okay. So this is to get access to the basement area?
Correct, right.
Is there any other access to the basement area?
No. Right now, it's just under the stairs, under the front stairs. So we're taking that out to be able to move the new stairs into this addition.
Thank you very much. We'll close it unless somebody else wants to comment on this case. Seeing none, thank you very much. I will close testimony and ask for a motion.
I move to recommend granting a request for a 2.1-foot combined side yard setback to permit the construction of a one-story addition at 1124 Elmwood Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
Second.
I have no problem with this request. I think the addition is a modest addition that will make the entry into the house more useful and will make access to the basement a much easier proposition. I think two feet can easily be spared, so.
Yeah, I agree. Since there's no other access to the basement area, this is a, you know, a small request. You know, initially, when I looked at it, it looked like you're pretty tight with the neighbors, but they don't, they're not complaining, and there's no other access, then I think there is a hardship, and I think it meets the standards of review, so I can support it.
I concur with them. I do as well. I would have preferred a letter from the neighbor rather than just having to take your word for it, but we'll go with your word.
I agree. I, there is some level of hardship relative to the access to the basement, and this is a small request, and so I can, I can support it as well. Will be...
Ms. Choka Urban.
Aye.
Mr. Colling.
Aye.
Ms. Norick.
Yes.
Mr. Pelletan.
Yes.
Mr. Sermon.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider.
Yes. So this is unanimous recommendation to the Board of Trustees. You may want to attend that meeting, although they may not spend all of time on it, but to be safe, the meeting is on February 11th.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2019-C-42.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next case, please.
Next case is 2020 Z-1, 1120 Michigan Avenue. This is a request for a one-foot retaining wall side yard setback variation to permit the replacement and expansion of a retaining wall on the north lot line.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Kettlecamp of Kettlecamp and Kettlecamp Landscape Architecture, 1315 Sherman Place in Evanston, representing Lynn and Jeff Chikazian, who are the homeowners, in seeking a variance or a waiver of the requirement that the, that the retaining wall on the north side yard be one foot off the property line. The, we're asking that, essentially that the existing retaining wall that was there that allowed for an eight-foot four-wide driveway, that the new retaining wall be put into that exact same location, which would be, still continue to allow for them to have eight feet four of clearance as opposed to if the ordinance were adhered to, the driveway would be pinched down to seven feet four, and they would no longer have access to, to the garage behind the house as they have.
The existing, what was the former one? There's a, there's a retaining wall there now, but what was the...
It was demolished during the course of...
But that was, that abutted the property line to the north?
That did, yeah, but it was entirely on the Chikazian's property. That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. So in effect, they're seeking a remove and replace, I guess, would be the, the term that we would typically use in this situation.
But you have replaced it?
Pardon?
Isn't it replaced?
It is replaced.
And if you, I, we were just talking, if you, if you look at one of these drawings that you could pull up.
Yes.
That shows the plan. There you go. That's the one, yeah, yeah. Does this work?
Yeah.
If you could move it up so that...
There you go.
I see there, there's this blue hashed line.
Yes.
Is that the existing or the new?
That was where the wall would have been required to go, have been installed if it had been as per the ordinance. So you'll see that the red line is the old retaining wall, a curved retaining wall. That was demolished when the driveway was ripped out, and that one was abutting the property line. And then if the ordinance is adhered to, that new retaining wall is, would have been required to have been one foot closer to the house, and then that would have pushed, that would have created a pinch point between the house and the retaining wall of seven feet four inches, which is then undrivable. As it was with the eight feet four, the homeowner during the course of the past 20 years has occasionally scraped the wall, but they just didn't feel that they could do it at, if the wall were required to be moved into the one-foot side yard setback requirement.
So what you have now installed, you have, you're abutting the, the north property?
That's correct. The wall is entirely on the Chikazian's property, but it is, it was, it was in the exact same location that the red, where the previous retaining wall was.
And so then on the, on the adjoining house on the north, there's a gap there of about what, a foot and a half?
There's a gap of a foot and a half, and there'll be a fence that goes back in there to separate that property from...
What property is that?
That is, that's the property to the north. That is 1126 Michigan Avenue.
So that, that gap property is theirs?
That gap property is theirs, yeah, that's correct.
There's a letter from the, those, the owners of 1126, saying that they have no issue with it.
Correct.
I have a question, or do you want to go ahead?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I just, so you're going to put the railing on top of the new wall?
The, there's going to be a six-foot-six fence that goes back up on top of the wall. The neighbors allowed the Chikazians to remove the old fence that was up there for the purposes of construction access, and then immediately after the construction is complete, it's actually been scheduled for next week. There's a fence contractor that's ready to go in and then put the six-foot-six fence back up and into, back into position.
Is it a solid fence?
It is a solid fence, yes.
But it tears down towards the bottom?
It tears down following the same line of the, or the contour of the, of the existing retaining wall. That's right.
I was just curious, if you look at the section of it, and if you look at the second bay from the right, I'll call them bays where the columns are, yeah, up on the top there, right above the group of notes, right there, yeah. Is there a drop there? You know, it looks like the existing, it says existing neighbor's grade, and then the fence. Is there much of a drop there? If there's over 18 inches in a drop, I think you'd have to have a handrail or a higher fence.
Well, the fence will be six-foot-six at that location. Plus, so it was the neighbor's fence that was removed. So the, the fence height, the six-foot-six is measured from the, from the, from the neighbor's grade. The Chikazians are just replacing the fence that was there previously.
Okay, but it shows the, a note right above there, existing neighbor's grade, which is higher than the fence, or just below it.
Oh, that's not the fence. That is the retaining wall.
That's the retaining wall.
So that's...
Oh, okay, so that's the retain, just, okay, I thought the fence was the area between that, just the retaining wall.
The fence is, the fence is not shown, the fence is not shown that there's...
Okay, so there wouldn't be a drop.
Correct, exactly. On top of this retaining wall, there'll be six-foot-six additional as the village require, or not requires, but mandates.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was surprised when I visited the property that, to see that the retaining wall was in. I didn't see any reference to that in the materials. Could you address that point?
Yeah, the, the contractor was, was concerned about losing the, was concerned about losing the construction window. We didn't know what the weather was going to be, and he wanted to go ahead with the project and ask forgiveness, you know, and ask forgiveness in this situation. So the contractor had to put that wall in. The wall, as it's engineered, you can see in this particular section, there are 11-foot pilings that go down and into the ground. Normally, a retaining wall wouldn't have to have that kind of structure, but in effect, what this wall is doing is it's also supporting the neighbor's retaining wall and driveway. So it's, this is acting as shoring, or the, the structure that was built actually acts as shoring for the, for the neighbor's driveway and retaining wall that they have back there during the course of, during the course of construction. Again, they were afraid of losing their window and went ahead and installed it as per the, the engineer's recommendation, which was then sinking those steel I-beams 11 feet down and into the ground so that the shoring on the neighbor's property was maintained, and with the understanding that the variance had not yet been granted.
When did they apply for the variance compared to when the wall was built?
So...
We typically, as a committee, we don't look upon people that do their work before and then ask for forgiveness.
I'll show you really quickly what happened. We believed that we could put the wall where the wall was approved to be, which was one foot off of the property line. We went out and we had a surveyor stake the property line. The surveyor staked the property line. In this photo that you see here, the white line is where the surveyor essentially staked the property line. And what we then, we thought we could, we thought that we had the clearance to get a car by. So then there's the, but when it was actually field marked out by the surveyor, the property line is where the white line is. You can see the location of the old concrete curb or the existing concrete curb slash retaining wall that, that abuts the property line. And then the pink mark is where the, was where the steel I-beams were then, that would support the retaining wall, were proposed to go. We marked it out in the field, immediately noted that there was only seven feet four of clearance between, between these projections that you see on the side of the historic house. And within one hour, I was in the village hall applying for the variance.
Okay.
So again, we went into it with believing that we could get the car by.
Applied before the work was done.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And then the homeowner saw that the, the homeowner saw the, the condition as it was marked in the field, and they said, "There's no way that I can get through there." She said, "I've scraped this wall so many times before. If I have one foot less than we previously have, I just don't believe that I can do it." So I immediately came down and I met with the city engineer as well as, as Lisa, and, and applied for, and immediately applied for the variance that same day that we found the field condition.
When was this?
December 4th-ish?
Pardon, Lisa?
December 4th.
Okay.
December 4th? So when you look at the pictures you have there?
Yes.
Is that on the upper left-hand corner?
Here?
Yeah. So is, I know this was a kind of an add-on, right, to an existing home?
They removed, they removed a garage, and it's, it's a modification to an existing home. The guest house at the back remains, and there was a bridge structure in between, and they modified that bridge structure in between so that they had a larger, a larger kitchen. But it's the, the footprint of the, it's not an, I, I wouldn't describe it as a tack on or an addition, and in fact, the garage, which was, there was another variance. You can see it in the history of the project. It was sought by the architect. The, the old garage was across the 10-foot side yard setback, and that has now been brought back in to be in compliance with the, with the side yard setbacks.
As I look at this, it looks like new construction to me. Is that, is that right?
No.
No.
It looks new. That's why, the only reason I'm asking. On the upper left-hand corner and the lower left-hand side.
Up here?
Yep.
Oh, no, that's...
When you look at the building, it looks new.
No, that's, that's the original, that's the original 1915 Van Bergen house, yeah.
Right. And it's a historic significance?
Yeah, we can't touch the house. I, I jokingly said to the homeowner, "Can we remove or can we cut a notch into that, to that buttress there?" And we were told by village staff, when they heard that we were suggesting that, "You absolutely cannot do that." So, but again, just joking there, so.
It's a registered landmark.
Yes.
With a little sign outside.
Yeah.
Can we go back to the, to the section, to the section that, this is not maybe relevant to the case, but I'm just curious, why the variation on the, on the depth of the, of the piers?
The variation on the depth of the piers has to do with the amount of weight that's actually being supported then on the neighbor's side, or the, the bearing of the neighbor's driveway and retaining wall on this, so that there's greater support needed in the middle. At least that was what the structural engineer told us. Those, and again, they're 11 feet in the ground is how deep those steel I-beams have been embedded in the ground, even though they only project up four...
But they have to be at least 42 inches or something, right?
Typically, in a situation like that, they would be 42 inches, but these are 11 feet into the ground, yeah.
Because of the, the pressure of the...
Exactly.
So help me to understand the exigency of this. The contractor wanted to do it before conditions change. These were pile-driven in?
They were pile-driven in, yes. Or no, no, they were, they were drilled, they were drilled, put in place, so they weren't pile-driven in. They were drilled, put in place, and then set, or, and then set in concrete.
So these, these I-beam kind of things were pushed 11 feet and then surrounded with
Yes.
Any other questions?
No.
The applicant. Hearing none. Thank you very much. We'll see if someone has any other comments. Thank you. Appreciate it. Does anyone want to comment on this request? Seeing no one, we'll close testimony, and can we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Colling.
For case 2020-Z-Z-01, move to recommend granting a request for a one-foot retaining wall, side yard setback variation to permit the replacement and expansion of a retaining wall on the north lot line at 1120 Michigan Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
Second.
Mr. Colling. So first of all, it's troubling that people knew that they needed to, to get a variance and went ahead anyhow. I find, I find that problematic, and I don't know how the village deals with those things, but I think it should be dealt with. As to the variation, I mean, here you do have a historical home. You're replacing an existing retaining wall. You're maintaining an 8.4 driveway, which couldn't be smaller and usable. So there are certainly hardships that, in my mind, you know, make it easy for me to say, you know, I can approve this and go along with this. But I do find it, you know, unsettling that somebody would just say, "Okay, we got a problem, and we're just going to do it and ask for forgiveness later," I think. It's just, you know, not how things should be done, so.
I agree with John completely. I'm an architect. I've built plenty of commercial spaces. The contractor knew that that wall was in poor shape. If he didn't, he shouldn't be doing the work, you know, the existing one that was there. It, it's evident that there could, there would be an issue. So I don't know, were they reported for this, or did they, they, nobody reported that issue?
I don't believe so.
No, okay. Yeah, it just, it's, it's bothersome for our board because of not just this case, but other cases where people just ask for forgiveness, and, "Oh, I didn't need, I didn't know I needed that." So instead of making a phone call or... So instead of making a phone call, or instead of the general contractor approaching it, I mean, he put, put you on this, and it's really more his responsibility than the landscape architect. He does the design work, and he's not the one designing the wall itself. So I agree, that is bothersome, and I think it's something, like John said, the village needs to take a look at long-term. But I do understand the hardship and the small driveway, and it would not be usable at seven foot four. But the tightest parking space you'd create ever would be eight feet wide, so.
Right. Yeah, cars are six, six and a half feet wide, so I can understand and agree with you guys, you gentlemen, about the hardships that are here. I disagree with the, the contractor's take on this and the fact that he needed to get it done immediately, 'cause especially if he's drilling, well, he can get through a couple of feet of frozen ground, and it, we haven't had a hard freeze, sustained freeze, so I, I'm, I'm a bit miffed about why it is that he felt compelled to go ahead with this, other than his own convenience. And so that, that part of it is troubling to me.
And yet, we run into it often, so, but I, I do agree that the hardship exists, and I do think it's, you know, they're rebuilding on their exact location, so I don't have an issue with the request itself.
I'm in complete agreement with everything that's been said. I was also miffed when I got out there and saw the wall and realized that the pack had hadn't said a word about it. But I believe a hardship exists and that there are grounds for granting the variance.
When we have a case like this, we always ask ourselves whether, had the applicant come to us before installing this retaining wall, I don't think we would have not approved it, because there's clearly a hardship, and it essentially replaces an existing badly decaying retaining wall that abuts the north property line. So all they're doing is replacing it, and it's necessary to have the, they can't, they couldn't adjust the historical house to the south to widen the driveway, so they were really limited. But I agree with all my colleagues here that, I can't imagine there was such an emergency that the adjoining driver was about to collapse, so they had to do something quickly, or that they were digging the, further digging down the slope of the drive, of the, of their driveway to, in order to necessitate an immediate support to the adjacent soils. So I have the same concern. I, I know we've, we've dealt with this before. And I, it is, the retaining wall is a very nice solution, and it's just the process that I have some concern about. But I don't know that we can undo what has been done, or should undo what has been done. The board might consider some remedy, but the board of trustees, I'm saying, but I think I have no other choice but to support this.
I'd like to add just one thing. To me, from all the construction projects I've done over the years, it appears more an opportunity or a convenience to keep the project on schedule, and I think that's probably why they went ahead with it.
Any other comments? Hearing none, shall we take a vote?
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletan?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Please, this, you can come up here, this comes with a positive recommendation, obviously, to the village board. I suggest you, you or your representative be there.
Oh, absolutely.
If you could just sign this for me, this has the village board date for you.
I move to recommend granting the request. I'm sorry, I already did that.
We already did that.
Moved to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2020-Z-01.
Second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You, you call the next case, please.
Our next case is 2019-Z-45, 1111 Central Avenue. This is a request for a special use for an art studio to permit the operation of a dance studio.
Hello?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. First, I'd just like to thank the board for giving us a continuance.
What's your name again, please?
Yes, my name is Jana Bennett, and I am here to request a special use permit for my dance studio, Skunk Works Dance, at 1111 Central Avenue in the, in the Village Center. I'm a born and raised in Chicago's North Shore, and I'm a professional dancer, choreographer, and I'm the founder of Skunk Works Dance. For those of you who weren't here at the prior meeting, for those of you who were here, I'm just gonna do a really fast summary of what I had presented last time. At Skunk Works, what we offer is pre-professional dance training for youth ages three through 18. We also offer adult classes as well. Our hours are from 9:30 to 11:15 a.m., and from 4:15 to 9:15 p.m. on weekdays, and from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. on weekends. Mainly, our business revenue comes from our studio classes, our performing companies, but we also will be selling merchandise and apparel, which will generate sales tax for the, for the Village of Willmet. In the end, why I chose Willmet was because I did a pretty extensive study where I looked at every single dance studio on the North Shore, and I found that there was a pretty extensive market need for another dance studio, but especially a pre-professional dance studio. And 1111 Central for us is really the perfect home. You know, this past semester, we've actually been operating in the Village Center, renting from Actors Training Center and their storefront studio space. We had an extraordinarily successful first semester in that space. Additionally, 1111 Central's former tenant was Art Body, which was a dance fitness studio, so it's literally built out perfectly for a dance studio. And finally, when you're looking at our clientele, it's mainly children and their, and their, and their parents. And especially in the Village Center and on that Central Avenue, there are just a lot of businesses that we really believe we can bring value to through foot traffic and therefore revenue to these businesses. If there's one thing I really want you guys to take away, is that Skunk Works Dance is a business that's here to be run for many, many years to come, and hopefully will become a legacy and something that Willmet holds up with pride. Just a really kind of fun update since the last time I, I saw you guys. This past Sunday, we hosted our very first Dance-a-Palooza, a free day of dance event, and after one week of just traditional marketing, of putting up posters on people's windows, we have 53 brand-new participants, and each and every one of them is actually registering for class. Additionally, we also had five new inquiries and people registering for class as well, just from word of mouth from those students. And so it's just really showing me that this market need that I had researched and anticipated really is here in this community, and this community is really looking for a dance studio of this type. You know, we, we ended up getting a continuance because after I went through and explained our business, and I had multiple different people, including Carol Debo of Actors Training Center, Julie Cohen of Hubba Hubba, I also had Mimi of Lettuce Lassie Write a Letter, and now in the supplemental agenda, you'll also see Julie from the, from the chamber supporting us, as well as multiple customers talk on our behalf. The owner of Melody Spa had objected to us coming into the space due to the basis of sound. But, you know, a few days before this meeting, in the prior meeting, our landlord had graciously offered to put a full soundproof wall on the adjoining wall in between our two businesses. He was not able to be in attendance at that meeting. Al is in, in attendance here today. And obviously, I'm not able to speak on behalf of what he's offering, but I'm happy to answer any questions, especially from those of you guys who weren't here at the prior meeting, and I welcome your questions, thank you.
That was the, the main issue after, at that meeting, and you couldn't answer questions about the, the details about the soundproofing to the west, and I assume the owner is here today?
He is here today, yes.
And he can answer que, do we mind if we...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Say your name.
Al Belmonte with Wesley Realty Group. And we own and manage the, the building, and I, I apologize, I was not here at the last meeting. Had I known, I would have made an effort to get here, I had a conflict. We were aware of Mrs. Lou's concerns about sound, that was brought to our attention. Ms. Bennett did bring it to our attention. We have every intention to make sure that Ms. Lou's business remains viable, and sound attenuation is what we need to, to do in order to create that viability, we will do it, and we did offer to do it. And at the moment, I don't have the specifications, I can tell you that we've, I personally soundproofed a lot of commercial spaces, office spaces, we've built out spaces for therapists who are very sensitive to soundproofing between, in between therapy rooms. We've done soundproofing for other studios. I've done soundproofing in residential buildings and condo buildings, and, and it's always a little different. We are gonna work with the contractor that Ms. Bennett has to achieve the necessary level of soundproofing to mitigate any kind of noise transmission between the dance studio and the spa. I can, I can assure you that, and we will work with the village. If necessary, we'll hire an acoustical consultant to give us a detail, but I, I'm in the business to make sure that my businesses, my tenants remain in business so they can pay rent. We want to make sure that Ms. Lou's business remains viable, we want to make sure that Ms. Bennett's business is viable, and we'll do what we need to do to get that taken care of.
We have some architects and professional contractors on the, up here, so maybe they would like...
I do, I do have a question. Just so I understand, my understanding of the project right now is there's an existing wall, demising wall?
Yes.
And then the ceiling goes on top of that wall?
That's correct.
So I think the, and if you'd have experience, you'll underside, go right to the underside?
It's gotta go to the underneath of the deck, yeah.
So you modify the, the lay-in ceiling on both sides and go...
Yeah, we may have to readjust the grid and have it, 'cause it, it really makes no, no sense to just go right to the, to the, to the underside of the grid, because sound does pass across the top.
Okay, that's the main issue.
There are no wall-to-wall penetrations. At, at this point, it's just a solid wall, but yeah, you're right, we have to go to the underside of the deck to make sure nothing transmits.
And you may, they're gonna build the wall right up to the, the other wall? They're gonna, are they gonna, they're just gonna...
Truthfully, I don't know. I mean, I've used cushboard, where we've applied it directly to the wall, which is, you know, deadened sound completely. We've, we've built out separate walls and used two-by-six studs with batts in between and, and another sheet of 5/8" drywall, which has also worked. I kind of don't want to take a lot of the floor space away, so we're gonna look at different alternatives.
I don't know if you'd need, unless the height you'd need, you know, you might be able to get by with a two-by-four.
Or a two-by-four, yeah.
But then I would set it away from the wall a little.
Right, to create an air gap, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And one thing I've determined from designing projects is the, the sound sometimes is at the very bottom, and you need to caulk.
Calk the bottom, the bottom plate, yeah. Yeah, typically, I'll, I'll put a fiber pad on the bottom plate, and then we caulk, and then put, and put our finish on, on the outside.
Yeah, 'cause when they put the drywall, and they just take a piece and they put it on top, and sometimes there's a little gap there.
Yeah.
So as long as you take care of all those, I think, what is the structure, what is the structures of a, it's an older building, is it some sort of tile and it's plastered over?
Well, it was, it formerly was a stationary store, and it was, it was demolished many years ago into individual spaces, so there, it is, it is a frame partition right now.
Oh, okay. But the underside of the structure that you're going up to, is that like an old tin ceiling or...
Oh, that, oh, the underside, yeah, yeah, it's an old tin ceiling, it's, yeah, so, and it's applied.
You caulk up there as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I think that sounds good to me.
Yeah, but, excuse me, so you are, you're committing to do what is necessary?
We already have, yes. I mean, we, we need to make her happy, I need to make her happy, so yes, we, and, and I need to rent a store. So, yes.
And it's done at the owner's expense?
Yes.
The wall?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not gonna change their lease?
No, their lease stays the same, right.
And what about the timing of this? Because I know that Ms. Bennett wants to move in and start using the space as quickly as possible.
As soon as it's approved by the village board, we're ready to, you know, pull a permit and go, yeah.
As long as it's done prior to the start of classes?
Oh, yeah, it has to be done prior to occupancy. And, and, you know, again, we have a commitment to the other tenant to make sure that that's handled in the same way. You know, and in my opinion, if I don't, if I do it, if I don't do it, I'm gonna have the same issue, whether it's Ms. Bennett or someone else, and so...
And I think we appreciate that and, and understand that, we just got pages and pages of people, the tenant, the existing tenant is a little less than completely secure about how this is all gonna work out.
And I understand that, and, and I was floored by the negative response, to be honest with you, I did not expect that. I, I, you know, we, we had a tenant in there for many years, Art Body, and we never, you know, we never heard anything, and there was never an issue. When I got the email saying that it was concerned about noise, I said, "Well, you know, we gotta do something, we'll take care of it," and that's how we, how we approached it. And I'm here tonight to commit to that.
I have one last question. So any outlets that are required along that wall, you'll...
We'll have to bring out.
Reinstall those or, or bring them out?
We'll have to bring them out, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Another question, thank you very much for...
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Testimony now. I know anyone else would like to speak on this? Please.
Good afternoon, my name is Brad Bennett, I am Jana's husband. We live at 827 North Damon Unit 2 in Chicago. I was in attendance last month, I obviously didn't speak, and I have no background in dance, I have no background in architecture, but I am an attorney, and I do want to provide a little bit of context and also fact-check a lot of the statements that were made at the last meeting. As for the four supporters that spoke on behalf of Jana, Carol Debo spoke from the perspective of her then-current landlord and also a longtime business owner in Willmet. She also talked about the evolution of downtown Willmet and how Jana's business would complement what I believe you guys are trying to accomplish here. Kathleen McAllister is a current adult student of Jana's and a longtime resident of Willmet, and she too spoke about Jana and how her business would complement the downtown. Julie Cohen, the owner of Hubba Hubba, spoke on behalf of Jana and from the perspective of a retail business owner. And lastly, Verd Nolan testified as the father of one of the children that attends Jana's studio, but also as a resident not of Willmet but of Northbrook. And he stated that by picking up and dropping off his daughter, he's spent $400 at Melody Spa, and I think that is something to consider, whereas most of Jana's students are children, and so that requires a parent or caregiver to pick them up or drop them off. Classes are usually 45 minutes to an hour, and that is usually not a lot of time to go back home, so to kill that time, I envision these parents would naturally probably go to Melody Spa, run errands, and otherwise spend money in downtown Willmet. As for Melody Spa, my perspective, when Casey Lou, the owner of Melody Spa, and Ivy Lou, her sister who acted as an interpreter, testified, it was this us versus them mentality. And as Jana's husband, I know that cannot be anywhere further from the truth. And as Jana's husband, I know that cannot be anywhere further from the truth. I personally believe that Jana's Studio will complement Melody Spa as well as downtown Willmet. And when I read the petition that was presumably at Melody Spa that they were asking their clients to sign, if I didn't know any of the details of this case and I was about to get a massage, my signature would be on this page, basically accusing Jana's Studio of potentially, if she moves in, completely destroying the serenity of the spa business. And number one, that can't be further from the truth. Number two is Ms. Lou testified that she wants to work with other people and other businesses. And I know firsthand that Melody Spa has not reached out to Jana or Skunk Works Dance to find out exactly what type of business that is. And as for Art Body, Ms. Lou testified, and I do have timestamps for this video if you guys do want to fact-check me, is that she stated that Art Body was a yoga meditation studio more than once. And that is inaccurate. Art Body was a dance studio, fitness studio, and I know Jana has with her videos from Art Body, which is still in business there in Evanston now, and that there was music. It was loud at times, but it was definitely not a yoga meditation studio. I looked on their website. They don't offer any yoga. They don't offer any meditation. So that is definitely not correct. Also, it was stated that Art Body's business hours were from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. So when Melody Spa opened, Art Body was kind of shutting down for the day, per Art Body's website. They mainly do host morning classes from 8:00 to noon. But I know firsthand that Art Body, at the time when they were in Willmet, were sub-renting two individuals, namely Jana, to hold classes there. And I know Jana held some of her classes at Art Body last year. Questions were also posed, how they were getting along with the pizza restaurant, Big Tomato. Mr. Sermon, I think you commented, or you asked if they could smell pizza. They said they could. You said that that was indicative that it wasn't soundproofed. When they were inquired about how they got along with Big Tomato, they said, quote-unquote, "Business is not very good," stating that they open at 4:00 p.m. and mainly there's some noise on Fridays. But they spoke to the owners of Big Tomato and that they agreed to turn down their music. Looking at the website of Big Tomato, there's conflicting information. Some say they open at 3:00, others say they open at 11:00 a.m. But again, when Melody Spa moved into their current location, they were between a dance studio and a restaurant. And as for Melody Spa itself, when I was listening to the testimony last month, what I envisioned was individual rooms where people were getting massages and, you know, very quiet, very serene. And what I come to find out after last month's meeting is that the spa is set up in one large room where it's... Everyone's getting a massage really next to each other. There is not a separate waiting room, and the waiting room is facing the street. People can talk. The telephone rings. That can be heard. So... And again, I don't want to sound as if I'm painting Melody Spa in negative light. I think it's a very good concept. But what came across to me as an audience member last month was that setup. So knowing that it is a little bit different, I think that is important to know as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment?
Good evening. My name is Ivy Lou.
My name is Kathy Lou.
So regarding about what Mr. What... I'm sorry.
Mr. Bennett.
Mr. Bennett's question about the big grand room. So that is more reason we need more quiet. I mean, I don't know if you ever enter there, if you ever enter there, you find out it's really peaceful, very quiet place, even if not customer next, I mean, next to each other, because they know that it's spa is the place to relax. So, I mean, I don't think that is the reason. I mean, we can have the dance studio, I mean, loud or telephone, whatever, in that spa. So regarding about that question, I mean, like, we still, customers still prefer relaxing and quiet space. Of course, we welcome other business to come next to her business. I mean, definitely downtown Willmet need new business, but also need to protect the existing business. So for the owner, I believe I'm the owner. I have rental buildings, but I don't have commercial, okay? So I don't understand. I mean, if next tenants coming conflict with the previous tenants, we definitely, okay, we're going to consider it, but first we need to stand on existing tenant's right to make sure they are going to run their business okay. They are not going to have any issue. So I believe if as the owner, you need to get the new business, but you need to protect your existing business. Hmm, what else? So, and another thing is, my sister, she invest a lot of money, and this is her only business. So, I mean, she need to get out some money from this, and $30 each hour, she working really hard for our year and a half to build this business. So right now, she gets probably about 900 to 1,000 customer each month. I mean, this is really going to get a big, huge benefits for the Willmet residents. How much they can, owning $30 that they don't want now or whatever thing, then they can spend on their wellness. So, I mean, and she's the only, I think, reflexology spa in Willmet. Are there any other spas going to charge at least $55 per hour to do the massage? So, I mean, I think definitely her business is gives a lot of people can invest on their house. That's what I have here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess I just have to say, you know, as a commercial architect, I feel comfortable with what the landlord's proposed and his knowledge on how to solve this.
Okay.
You should feel comfortable, and I think he's going beyond what other landlords would do by doing this and making sure it's done right. So I would feel good about that.
Okay. So only thing I want to protect my sister is, I want to make sure before they get the permit, they have the approved soundproofing. That means that is not going to affect her business later. So we just want to make sure, I mean, we're not engineer, we're not architecture, so we don't understand any of this thing. But from our prospect, we just want, okay, no issues later. That's it.
I mean, they may, just so you know, they may need to get into your space just to modify the ceiling to be able to do all that. But that would be a very short time if they needed to. I think you're going to be better, you know, much better off than you were before.
Sure. Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberts, do they need a... Do the owner need a permit to do what they're planning to do?
Yes. Yes.
And so you have some opportunity to review the...
The... I'm not exactly sure what the plan reviewer will look at. He is not, as far as I know, an acoustical expert, so he may not be able to judge the quality of what's been submitted. But he can ask them to verify, you know, with an engineer, have it stamped, you know, that kind of thing.
Any other comment? No one else from the audience? I see no one else. So we close testimony. Can we have a motion?
I move to recommend granting a request for a special use for the art studio, dance studio at 11111, sorry, Central Avenue. In accordance with the plans submitted, the zoning board will determine that this special use runs with the use.
I'll second that.
Mr. Sermon.
As I discussed with the landlord, you know, I'm confident that he's going to construct the wall properly, as long as he follows what we talked about. So... And I don't think it will impact the neighbor at all. I think he'll be surprised how well it will work. So given that, I can support it.
And I would agree. I'm quite frankly, very impressed with the amount of money that you're making on this yoga spa. $300,000, $360,000 a year is a very good business. That said, we don't have the ability, this board doesn't, to in... check up on the landlord and check up to make sure that everything is done correctly. Your only recourse would be to sue the landlord. So I hope it doesn't come to that. He is here, and he seems like he's interested in making a good faith effort to do it. And I believe that the dance studio is going to try as well. And so hopefully it'll work out well for everybody.
I just wanted to add, I believe, from what the landlord's offered, that he, if there was an issue, he'd try, he'd remedy this, you know, remedy the problem with the solution.
I missed the last meeting where this was discussed. But after reading the minutes from that meeting and hearing tonight's testimony, I feel reassured by the landlord's presence and his commitment to making the improvements necessary to soundproof the spa space from any music that will be played in the dance studio. And I feel that I can support this.
Yeah, I think at our last meeting, I mean, it was continued specifically to hear from the landlord, and I think you made a very compelling case about what you're going to do, and you have two tenants. You need to make them both happy because you need to get rent from both. And that makes perfect sense to me. And I think, you know, that was really what I was looking for, and, you know, you supplied that, so I am fine with this.
Yeah, I too feel comfortable with the presentation tonight and that, you know, the concerns that were expressed at the meeting, which I also missed, are, have been adequately addressed. I can support that.
I think at the last meeting, we were a little puzzled why the lease didn't include a provision to soundproof that wall. But that may be due to the inexperience or the lack of legal help from... For them. In any case, today, we have the landlord here. He has made a commitment very explicitly that he will do his best to soundproof that wall. And that's what we... All we can do is rely on that. And we assume that he will do what he said he will do here today. And that's a good thing. And let's... I hope we can move, and the Board of Trustees will move, so you can get that space improved as necessary, and that you can move in as quickly as possible. We have a...
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Culling?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. This comes as a positive recommendation to the Board of Trustees that will meet February... Did I miss it again?
11.
Was it 11?
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2019Z45.
Second.
All the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next case.
Our next case is 2020Z2, 519 Fourth Street. This is a request for a special use for an animal hospital.
Hello. I'm Barbara Royal. I'm the veterinarian and owner of the Royal Treatment Veterinary Center. I live at 311 Central in Willmet. And I'm applying for the special use to purchase the building at 519 Fourth Street and have a small, private, integrative veterinary medical center there. The highlights of the case, my case to you, is, are that I have been practicing in this area for over 20 years. I recently opened a very small facility at 405 Linden, which I came to the same board and asked for approval then. And it's gone very, very well, in such a way that I didn't really expect in a certain sense. So when the building around the corner came up to be purchased, I was like, wow, that's about the perfect size and perfect building for me. And even though it seemed a little...
You are now where, excuse me?
I'm around... Well, my main clinic is in the city.
Oh.
So I have a clinic in the city at 4130 North Rockwell, which is a... I probably have about 8,000 square feet there. And that facility, I've been running for, you know, I don't know, maybe 15 years or so. Then I, because I live in Willmet, I thought, you know what? I have so many people who pretty much come to my house and bring their pets and don't want to drive into the city. I just, I opened a small facility on Linden. I am very dedicated to the North Shore. A lot of my clients are driving from the North Shore down to the city with some irritation to be in the city at my city practice. And so it would be really nice for a lot of them to be able to come to a facility here. And what's happened with this small facility that I have, it's... I've done really well there. I would like to open a practice that actually can, you know, manage the, more of the clients that I want to have come. So these two practices in Willmet on Linden actually would be some, it would be a little bit different. I would change what I'm doing at the 405 Linden area and have it more just for the consults back and forth and a limited amount there, and use that for administrative space. And then have the building that I would purchase, that's 3,000 square feet, just have the exam rooms, as I noticed, noted in the, all the plans that we have.
Should you keep both locations?
I would keep both locations, yeah. I mean, I don't see a reason not to. And interestingly, I don't know how relevant it is, but the landlord, who I like quite well, on Linden is a general contractor, and we've talked about what he might do to help me with that space. So anyway, you know, it's just, it's a nice little community there, and we all get along, so...
You're leasing this new space?
I'm leasing, no, I'm leasing the old space, and I would be buying the building for the new space.
I see.
Yeah.
Obviously, you will also then pay for the rehab, the necessary...
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, that would be...
So is the, is the... I drove by there. Is that building, it's demise like a condominium, like a townhouse? You will own only the 35 feet of...
The building is the kitchen store.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's just, it's just the white building. It's a separate standalone, 3,000-square-foot building, and it's got sort of, it's got two doorways at the front. And it was a kitchen store.
I think what you're talking about, it appears that it could have been two shops in the past, but...
Oh, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Over time, I think they disconnected them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Your application says that you're seeking to operate an animal hospital. And the hours are office hours. And a question I have is, will you be keeping animals overnight? And will the place be staffed?
No, I will not be... And it says it in here as well, that I don't do overnight boarding or care for the animals. I don't imagine any reason why that would happen. We have all the different facilities in the area for emergency work. My clinic downtown doesn't do any... My clinic downtown doesn't do any overnight boarding, and it never has, and the facility I worked with before that family pet in, in the city, we really just didn't do overnight boarding. And, you know, it's just too hard to staff and do that unless you're an emergency clinic. So, yeah, I wouldn't be doing that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. The hours on there are pretty much what we, what we've been doing. We will, there will be extensions for, I definitely often have a 5:00 emergency walk in, and that happens, but it doesn't seem like it's a problem anywhere that I've been.
As I just have to say, as an architect, I'm always going to put in my two cents about the, the plan and everything. Obviously, this is early on.
Yeah.
But you're going to hire an architect to do the project, not just the contractor?
Oh, yeah, this is, yeah.
Because whoever did these preliminary ones, I mean, it's...
This is an architect who did this?
Oh, really?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't use my landlord.
I'm sorry, I'm surprised if he or she is watching because there are plenty of code violations.
They tried to do something quickly to give me an idea how it would look, because we were really going for, you know, they said you have to have plans for this meeting, so I said, okay, here's the basic things that I want, I need to have this many exam rooms and whatever. I imagine these are going to be those shift things.
Like an exit in the back somewhere, right?
Yeah.
You want?
Right now, both, well, the doors that are in the front of the building should swing out the way they are, but they're actually swing in, and that would be a decision that the city would have to make. But you can't have this large of a space. Anytime you have a space over 1,200 square feet, you have to have two exits, and they have to be remote. They can't be next to each other. So right now, the building, I would consider kind of a fire trap. I'm surprised that the village had...
Well, there's an exit at the back, there's actually, I think, two at the back.
There is?
I don't know that they haven't, they didn't show them, I don't know why.
Well, there's one near the mechanical room, but that's an overhead door, so that's not considered an exit.
I think there's another door on that, on the other side there.
I took a picture and I looked, I didn't see any.
No, not next to the mechanical door?
Well, they should show it, but I don't think so.
Okay, sorry. I don't know, but I'm sure there's going to be all kinds of different, I, I'm a veterinarian.
Yeah, no, I know.
I definitely do not know that.
I just want to, I just do it to caution you.
I totally appreciate that. You kidding me? I love architects. So, yeah. No, my, and I do have a reasonable amount of architectural, sort of a couple of friends and a couple of other people, so I would be dealing with that pretty extensively. I mean, it's an entire building, yeah.
Like, an architect, if they were an architect, wouldn't design, wouldn't, well, first wouldn't call them restrooms, and they're way too small. I mean, just stuff like that, that, and you just have to make sure that whoever you use knows commercial architecture and not residential.
Okay.
I'm actually correcting a residential architect that does nice work, his commercial project right now, because it didn't meet a lot of the ADA standards, a lot of the other codes, so...
Well, and I just went through that when we renovated the, you know, it used to be a comic store, and we completely redid everything there, so...
Okay.
And my landlord just renovated a building, another block away that was the, he did the North Shore, it's a, like a women's hospital there.
Oh, okay.
Right on, it's on Linden. So he did that whole thing, and it's beautiful.
Just one last question, I'm just curious, what are all those little rooms right across from the reception area?
The way I have my waiting rooms, it's half walls, and then their little half doors, almost like a little stall, so that the dogs cannot have to meet each other, but the people love to talk.
Oh, okay.
So as you're waiting, there's little...
Dog stands in there.
And then the dogs are sort of kept in a little corral, but people sit there and they can talk to each other.
Yeah, it didn't look like it'd be occupable by a person.
Oh, yeah, no, you just, literally, they just go in and they can sit in there, and the dog can sit in there or whatever, yeah, but they're pretty small. Yeah, they're just little waiting areas.
They're just curious.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Being done, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And can I have a motion? I don't see anybody else. Anybody else want to speak on this?
Sure, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion. But I think Mr. Pelletin.
Move to recommend granting a request for a special use for an animal hospital at 519 Fourth Street. In accordance with the plans submitted, the zoning board must determine the special use should run with the...
Use.
Use.
Second?
Delay. Well, I, I remember that at least half of this, when it was Mrs. Dees, and was sorry to see that go, but I'm glad to see that it's, you've got an alternate use for it, and I do think that there's a need for it. I was curious about these plans as well, since most of the rooms don't have doors on them, and door swings and how the doors work is usually a pretty important part of, of any plan. So I'm glad that they're going to be fleshed out further, and I think that we're going to be having more and more service businesses and fewer and fewer retail businesses, so I think this is a good one. And if you've had a positive response already from the, the place around the corner, well then that's a good, good sign. So I can support this recommendation.
I just want to interject one thing. Mrs. Dees, I think, was...
The other side.
The other side more towards the L.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm not sure what this was before the kitchen shop. I just remember going to Mrs. Dees with my kids, so...
Yeah.
Sorry, John.
No, it's okay. I mean, I agree, and I think, you know, it's a great, I mean, you've already been successful, you're just expanding your business, I think that's great for the village, and you can always use, you know, I mean, animals obviously are, everybody's got pets and needs, they need care, so I'm sure there's a high demand for it, so I'm sure you'll be very successful, and I can support this.
Ditto.
Yeah, nothing more to add.
Nothing more either. I concur.
Yeah, I mean, just to show you, I remember we were working on what we call Linden Square and to develop, hopefully would develop into a, into a retail shopping center, and that hasn't worked out, and the hope to have a Trader Joe in this space is probably not very, very sound. So, given that, and I think we're going to move more and more to service oriented thing in certain locations rather than classic retail, so I, I can support it as well. Can you call?
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Culling?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Chalk Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this is a unanimous recommendation, and you may want to come to the board meeting, board of trustees meeting. Is it on the 11th?
Yes.
February 11th.
So that's the mechanical room.
To approve the meeting minutes for the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, November 20th, 2019.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the meeting minutes for the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, December 18th, 2019.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2020Z02.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and seeing that there's no one in the audience left, I move to close this meeting, adjourn the meeting.